We are pa- We are calling this meeting to order. Attendants?
Uh, trustee Gaines. Trustee Reeves. We have trustee Buffalo. Trustee Adams. Trustee Harvage.
Here.
We have the floor.
Any public comments for closed session?
No.
Okay. Uh, pursuant to board, well, we're not going to read that because we have none. All right, we are adjourning to closed session. We'll be back.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is an audio check. Audio check one, two, three.
We are reconvening to a public session. Attendants?
Present.
Trusty Gaines.
Present.
Trusty Reeves, please use your microphone.
Yes.
Trusty Buffalo.
Here.
Trusty Adams.
Here.
Trusty Harvey.
Here.
We have a call.
Mr. Adams, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. Would you all please stand, face the flag, put your hand from your heart and recite. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We are to eight point one approval of the meeting agenda.
Show move.
The vote.
Student trustee Rivera.
I approve.
Trusty Gaines.
Approved.
Trusty Reeves.
Yes.
Trusty Buffalo.
Yep.
Trusty Adam.
Hi.
Trusty Harvey.
Yes. Report of closed session. We have nothing to report. We are to ten public comments, agenda and non-agenda items pursuant to Board Policy 2350. Public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter on the agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or the recording secretary before the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the back of the room and from the recording secretary or online. First, we have Sharice Williams.
I'm a student here at ABC. This is my third semester. I'm just here palling on my class communication one, which is my professor's Brian Vivas. I just want to come here and state that the last time I was in college was real college. I was in my third semester. I didn't have a lot of outlook on life and maybe about a couple of twenty-two, I started fourth semester and I'm an AB student. However, a lot of things that I've learned has been pretty good. I have some great teachers, great professors. One of the issues that I have was throughout my courses was citing, citing and researching. And I like to say that Professor Vivas has really helped me a lot citing and researching. Some of the classes that I took demanded it. Those classes that I took were, I got B's from that because I really didn't know how to cite and research. I just came up here today because I was told that his tenure was not being renewed. So I was hoping on behalf of my class that it can be. This is my first board meeting, so I really don't know really what to say, but I just say that my two children are alumni here and they gave me the inspiration to come back to school. When I was looking for teachers, I did degrade my professor. I saw that he wasn't, you know, his classwork was poor and all that stuff like that. I myself personally took on a challenge and that challenge has been very good for me. Right now, we're in our third presentation and I'd like to say that I'm doing actually really good in the whole classes. That's all I really have to say. I just hope that God would extend his tenure. And I know that the rate of African-American teachers and Latino teachers are very low. So I'm hoping that you could consider his tenure. If not, at least let us finish our coursework because we only have less than a month ago. And I know that substitute might come in if it's not extended or it might, the class might be canceled. On behalf of my classmates, we're all doing great through the Professor Vivas in Communication one, Tuesdays and Thursdays. So I'd just like to say that and I'm looking forward to continuing my education and also in the transfer student. So due to just me being who I am, I'd just like to say that Professor Vivas is an awesome teacher. He's awesome. He has a lot of similar, I have a lot of similarity with him and he helps me a lot. I'm also a student of disability and so he doesn't make me feel like, like I have a disability when I'm not in this classroom. So I'd just like to say that and thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Will. Yes, Dr. Selah.
Ms. Williams, I would like to assure you that your classes will not be canceled and you will not have a substitute. You will be able to continue the rest of the semester as is. Thank you.
Next, we have Javier Ambrosio.
Mr. Ambrosio, can you bring the mic down closer to your mouth?
Right on it.
Like I'm right on it.
This is good? Hello? Can you hear me? Good? Okay. So my name is Javier Ambrosio and so I just came back from Spain. I was studying abroad. Maybe one of the mistakes I might have made maybe was not knowing that we have developed more topics. So I'm just coming back and I'm facing a little bit of a culture shock on a lot of the topics regarding the EGI test that I took in college. Something that I didn't seem to have access, but I have three concerns that I just wanted to bring up to you guys and they're questions, very much just questions. So the first one is anthropology. I am currently in a long-term class with the department. I dropped that class because I guess of attendance. And that's interesting because in our community, I think that it means a big difference. And that's interesting because in our community, I think that it's something that a lot of students and teachers try to resolve with all the courses and everything. I feel like that's exactly where I'm at, right? You know, we're in the class where it's trying to be innovative, but it's really hard for it to be innovative because we don't have a system. If I look into other science department, there's a lot of science faculty. That anthropology, I believe, when we got the Bible, was the person who is in charge of most everything. So it's really hard to expand our opportunities in anthropology. So my question here is if there's an opportunity we have, I'd like to follow up with shepherds. That'd be great. The second thing is community. Our community, I happen to always be really involved in it, but I'm going into a little bit of a big problem. And I don't know if you adjust, but I would need some guidance, go to the past, how it's been handled. At least know that I need to talk to someone. I've got a, you know, a big series. But like I said, I don't want to divulge or give too much information because I believe there's a lot of growth here that I can't just all at once address. I would like to ask, is anybody here who I can speak to about this? It's really a community problem. The last question is something I'm not really too sure about. My study brought on this test, it says that it's a sociology test. But one of the things that's missing on my checklist is social action group. And I don't know anything to ask about this. I was just wondering if there's somebody in the department that I have a little bit more information on that because I'm just a little confused on that. And those are the three questions I have. So I'm really thinking about the anthropology.
Mr. Ambrosio, thank you so much for coming and speaking to us. Could you tell me the name of the assessment that you took?
Sure. It's called the MBTI Assessment Personality Core. Up at our college, all students have access to it. We know a lot of people.
Okay. And I'm gonna go out on a limb here, but I believe Dr. Selat can answer your questions relative to anthropology and needing someone to talk to relative to the community. Yeah, yeah, we're listening. Dr. Selat?
With regard to anthropology and the academic programming, certainly Vice President of Academic Affairs would be one that you could speak to about any of that. Any of the community problems. And I know that you know Vice President Padron, the two of you could have a conversation about those things. And I, we can take it from there. How's that? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Jason Bowen.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, President Zalat, General Counsel Miss Bridgette Cook, Miss Cooper, good evening. It's great to be here at the Palmdale Center. I'd like to discuss briefly administrative leave. We continue to have a faculty member on involuntary paid administrative leave. I'm gonna talk, so I'm gonna talk, discuss this yet again, but I was inspired by Paul Russo Baguina, who was depicted by Don Cheadle in the movie Hotel Rwanda. What's interesting is Saturday marked thirty years since the genocide in Rwanda and he discussed what he would like the world to take from that in an op ed he wrote for the New York Times. He says, "I'm grateful for the two personal lessons I decided to take from living through this atrocity. The first, never, ever, ever give up. This is what sustained me when I was kidnapped in August twenty-twenty by an operative of the Rwandan intelligence services and wrongfully detained in Rwanda on charges of terrorism and other crimes, along with others who were critical of the current government. The second, words are our most effective weapons when we are confronted by those who seek to oppress and victimize others. So I am a firm believer that words bring about change. It may take centuries, but change will always come about if we persist." If I'm detained, charge me or release me. So we respect habeas corpus in this country. We respect due process. In the California Education Code, section eight seven six two three, it states, "Within ninety working days of placing an academic employee on involuntary paid administrative leave, the employer should complete its investigation of the accused misconduct and initiate disciplinary proceedings against or reinstate the employee unless the period of paid administrative leave is extended by agreement of the employee and employer." In other words, charge me or release me. Now, there was some debate I had with administration in January as to when the ninety-day clock expires. I was, I believe that expires, expired in January. Here, what I have is a statement from administration stating that the ninety-day clock expired in February, yet here we are in April and this faculty member remains on involuntary paid administrative leave. Title five states, this was interesting, "Notwithstanding subdivisions A and B in matters involving an academic employee placing an involuntary paid administrative leave, the district shall complete its investigation within ninety working days. Of the administrative leave commencing unless the period of paid administrative leave is extended by agreement of the employee and employer for a period not exceeding thirty additional days." In other words, charge me or release me.
We have a presentation, the Learning Center update. Welcome.
There's, there's a lot of us. Hi, can you guys hear me okay? My name is Ashley Hawkins. I'm the Learning Center Director.
I would just like to let the board know that the Learning Center update packet is in your.
Oh, it's, I have it in front of me. Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you.
So my name is Ashley Hawkins. I'm the Director of the Learning Center. Thank you guys so much for allotting time for us to talk to you today. I just wanted to start by introducing my fabulous team, most of which are here, but not all. So we have, in the Learning Center, we have two full-time, two full-time faculty, five adjunct faculty, five tutorial specialists, one Learning Center specialist, and seventy-eight student workers. We have sixty-seven tutors and eleven desk assistants. So we have a huge team and we're gonna dive in and really talk to you about some stuff that we've been able to accomplish. But I want to be really, really clear, none of it happens without this team. In the fall of twenty-three, we, with President Zalat's blessing and advice, started to garner apportionment, which means that we started to earn Oh, I forgot. One more. Okay. We started garnering apportionment for supervised tutoring, which means that the Learning Center essentially became a classroom. And so anyone coming in, getting tutoring counts as enrollment as they would in any other classroom. So we went from not having any because we weren't garnering apportionment to three-point-three for the, or I'm sorry, five-point-one for the fall. And we're on pace to garner about six-point-two to six-point-five for the spring, which is impressive because spring is a lower enrolled semester typically than fall. And just to give you some context, one FTEs is five-hundred-and-twenty-five student contact hours. So we're at about eleven-point-three for the academic year and we're on pace to continue to grow beyond that.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Sarah Rano. I'm the faculty member here in the Learning Center. Thank you so much. Thank you. So during week one, our student worker team emailed about five hundred faculty members. About eight-hundred-and-sixteen of those courses that we could not physically attend received a brief informational video to embed in their campus shell about the Learning Center. The remaining received a request for a five-to-ten-minute in-person presentation. During weeks two through five, our student workers met with one-hundred-and-sixty classes and spoke to four-thousand-fifty-two students, which was very, very exciting for us for our first go-around with this. Because of efforts like outreach among others this semester, you can see that we've had significant growth in the number of tutoring appointments in all three categories, including individual virtual appointments like on Zoom, individual in-person appointments, and then group in-person sessions for an overall tutoring increase of twenty-eight percent as compared to this time this fall semester.
Good afternoon. I'm Anthony. I'm one of the tutors. I was just gonna talk a little bit about our experience with outreach. For us, I think at first we were a little reluctant. We were kind of nervous about it, you know, probably to all these students and professors. But we did more and more. I agree to actually like it. I enjoyed it. I talked to a whole bunch of the faculty and professors and I knew students and stuff like that. And I think it overall benefited the Learning Center a lot. When I went to particularly one of the calculus classes, I did one of the presentations. The day after, I had one of those students come in for a chemistry one-technician that I would tutor. And then after that, I've seen her like three or four times. And I've seen like, I've been here for like about a year. I think we've seen a lot more students because of outreach. And I think it's just a really positive experience.
All right. Another thing we do to support students in the Learning Center is encourage our tutors to take advantage of opportunities for personal and professional growth. For many years, our writing tutors have participated in the Southern California Writers, Writing Centers Association Tutor Conference, which includes colleges and universities from all over Southern California and even into Nevada and Utah. This was our first year back from the pandemic in person. We had a couple of virtual conferences and it was held at Baker School of College. We were all excited for it. There were over a hundred tutors there plus their faculty and directors. And two groups, four students from our writing center, our learning center, presented at the conference. Had that professional experience. Professor Rano and I mentored them through submitting a proposal and then when they were accepted, developing their presentations. But they did most of the work and they were wonderful. None of, we took seven tutors in all. None of them were able to be here tonight, but they all expressed appreciation for the experience and how much they gained from it.
Hello, everyone. Members of the board. Good evening. My name is Joshua Pobman, Tutorial Specialist here at the Learning Center. And I oversee the Student-Athlete Academic Achievement Zone, which is the zone. So this project has been in the making for about two years, ever since I started here at ABC. I gave my love to Ashley about how much I love working with student athletes, being a student athlete myself when I was at UC Santa Barbara. And I wanted to bring it here at ABC. So the zone launched in fall twenty-twenty-three and since its implementation, it has housed over three-hundred-and-eight student athletes, creating a space where student athletes can meet their educational goals while attending Central Valley College. In this environment, student athletes can seek assistance with homework, meet with their assigned athletic counselor, participate in independent study and receive weekly progress checks regarding their grades. I unfortunately have to deliver the bad news of giving them their grades, but it's not all bad news. Aside from the academics, the zone also serves as a space where student athletes can inquire and connect to different campus resources. The Learning Center hosts various workshops through Professor Rano and Professor Ryder. And then the student athletes can participate in those workshops such as handling time management, dealing with reducing test-taking anxiety, and then assume responsibility for the academic success. We always give them praise for what they do on the field. We want to give them that praise when they're off the field. And then due to the overwhelming success of the zone, thank you, Ashley, for that, we have received permission to expand the zone and create a smaller version of the Learning Center at the Marauder Complex. And then as you often see on the screen, each athlete is required to complete four hours each week, which has led to a four percent increase across the GPA. And nine out of the fourteen teams are averaging a three-point or higher right now. Thank you.
As a result of the success that we've had in athletics, we've recently entered in we've recently entered into an agreement with our RISE program, which is our students that are on academic probation. So we were able to show them the success that we're having with the athletes. And beginning in the fall, students who are on academic probation are going to be mandated to spend at least two hours a week in the Learning Center. So we're hoping to duplicate this success across that population as well.
Hello. Hi, my name's Phoebe Danya and I'm one of the tutoring specialists at the Learning Center. So as stated in our values in the Learning Center, relationships are at the heart of what we do to strive to support the Learning Center, I mean, sorry, agency learning community. In addition to our peer-to-peer tutoring services, the Learning Center is also providing opportunities, opportunities of learning support by hosting engaging activities and events for students and tutors. This spring, so far, we've had a successful midterm study jam and a pi-day celebration. All this would not be possible without the collaboration and enthusiasm of our tutors and mentor assistants. So I wanted to pass the mic over to three student workers to speak about their experiences working events and addition to the regular duties in the Learning Center.
Good evening, good members. My name is Jason and I'm a tutor at the Central Valley College Learning Center. This is my first semester as a tutor. So I specialize in math and English and other subjects. But from my experience so far as a tutor, this has been my, one event that I would like to count is the study jam. So interestingly enough, fall semester twenty-twenty-three was what we moved on to. Because at first, I was working up the veterans resource and definitely I was better. But I told myself, I want to do better. I don't want to just help just only veterans, but I want to help out all our students. So I took the next step and became a tutor. Now that I have become a tutor, I want to carry on this tradition for all of the tutors. Hopefully in the future, we can extend our resources out to other students. Now I will give the plug to my colleague.
Good afternoon, Chair. I'm Julia. I'm a resident at the Academy Learning Center and I've been in school for about two and a half years now. And one thing I would like to say is that this semester, I've never seen so many students at the Learning Center as much as they do. And that's a good thing. And to emphasize on the study jam, pi-day and study jam, I was at the next semester, which is, you know, like it makes me happy seeing that we make things happen. And pi-day, I thought it was very unique and, you know, we had fun and then grew up with the brains. And as a student, I have seen, I was at the students that I have almost two and a half years and I'm excited to see this.
I'm Kevin Rahal. I'm a student here at ABC. I've been working at the Learning Center for like this whole semester, second semester. I want to talk about my experiences here at Learning Center with the study jam. My experience with the study jam was exciting. This event provided food, drinks, and certainly snacks and more. This event had an overall positive atmosphere and I'm looking forward to more.
Your experiences and feedback are essential to continued growth of the Learning Center. Much of your feedback has been voiced prior to tonight's presentation and we look forward to giving you suggestions, your experiences, and applying them to upcoming activities for the Southern Valley College Masters with your very excellent. Thank you. Any questions?
Or do we have questions for the Learning Center employees? Ms. Hawkins, I know that this team is responsible for all of these positive outcomes, but it just really lifted my heart to hear all of this work and to see these good numbers and the passion of the employees and the tutors. And Anthony, you're right, the athletics and academics go together. They're important. So thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have eleven-point-two, historically black colleges and universities, the HBCU tour update.
Alberto, Alberto, before you get started, anyone who's speaking, speak from the top of the microphone. I've got somebody watching and they said they hear when, when people are speaking from the top. I've got somebody watching, and they said they hear when people are speaking from the top of the microphone down. They can hear those people who are speaking directly in front of it aren't being heard. So top, top then.
How's this? Is this okay? Okay, okay. Here we go. I think this sounds good, but let me honor it, right? So good evening. It's Steve, members of board of Terces de Prova Sale, Miss Ben, Miss Bridget, Cook, and honored guests. So I'm here to talk about the tour, HBCU tour, that equity department in Imoja. They can see some of these great pictures. You can, I wish my face was a Florida, right? But everybody else is beautiful people up there, over there, yeah? Great, great over there. I think it's Norfolk State University. So if we can go to the next slide, just what we had composed there for the group were seven chaperones and thirty-five students. Our chaperone, Chief Artino, Councilman Metro Calation, Dr. Rashida Branaleese, myself, Dr. Jessica Eaton, Ms. Crystal Ibrahim, Ozzy Ladios Perez, Biology Faculty, Dr. Francisco Quintas, and Dr. Karina Georgi. So at this time, let me call up Dr. Francisco Quintas, who is our awesome full-time faculty in ethnic studies, who will guide us toward some of these adventures that we had and to the student experiences of them.
Good evening, board. This is a special guest. My name is Delton Francisco Quintas. And I had the privilege and honor of being a chaperone for our HBCU tour. That's historically black colleges and universities. We went out to the East Coast for this trip, so we went across the country. This was many students, the majority of students, very first time on an airplane. So we can talk about really opportunities here, but also exposure and awareness. And I think that's one of the big things, a big takeaway from the HBCU tour. Just to give you a highlight of our different places and locations, we not only visited seventeen universities, we also visited some historical landmarks in our free moments and availability. We had the opportunity of spending three hours at the National African American History and Culture Museum. For me personally, I actually had to take a seat at a certain moment in one of their exhibits because it was so powerful and moving. I was compelled to tears, and, you know, it was just something that was unexpected from this trip. And that really kind of set a tone for the, for the, what's really at stake here for our students. And I think for a lot of our students leaving California for the very first time, it was life-changing. It really helped them understand the opportunities that awaited and afforded them outside of California. They realized that not only could they grow their local and regional networks, but they can expand their national networks as well. Something that's required for us to experience social mobility as individuals, as households. There was a lot of different universities that we got to see that were all of them over a hundred years old. And Lincoln University for me was my particular highlight. Not because it was renamed after Abraham Lincoln, and not because it first started off as a biblical seminary, but because of its three Ls that it tries to instill in its students, the value to lead, the value to learn, and the value to liberate. And I think those three really kind of stuck with me personally. And I know what's really interesting is every single student has their own story to tell on what university stood out to them and why. And it can be as simple as the colors, the mascot, or it can be something as, you know, as academic programming, rigor, or scholarships. But everyone is different, and everyone's allowed to make a difference. I was a first-generation college student. I, I, I did not know about universities outside of my hometown. And so when I went for the very first time to my university orientation, that was my very first time there. And I picked it because I looked at the brochures, and I had a picture of the beach, right? And that was my decision-making. And I don't regret that decision whatsoever. And I think that, you know, no, no minute point for making a decision is too small for, you know, for these kind of things. But these were very distinguished universities that we had an opportunity. These were sixteen-hour days that we were spending. We had enough time to check into our hotel room, sleep, shower, eat, and get back on the bus before nine AM every single morning. And I, I'm saying nine AM Eastern Standard Time, right? So it, it was grueling, but it was well worth it. And you can tell the demeanor of students after the five days on the trip, how seriously they get. There, there, and for many students, I saw them renew their commitment to higher education. One of the landmarks and a highlight in this photo here, where we took a group photo, is the Martin Luther King Junior Memorial. It's right adjacent to the Lincoln Memorial, as well as the Korean War Veteran Memorial. We had an opportunity to visit all three. Very quickly, I may add, because our, most of our time was spent on university campuses. But we did have a chance to very quickly make a stop through each of these landmarks. And one of the quotes most memorable that I think is pertinent to our times that I took away from the MLK Memorial is darkness cannot drive out darkness. I mean, light can. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can. So and with that, I, I want to express sort of a, a, I, I always love students, but when you get a chance to spend so many days with these students in a bus for so long, you really begin to develop a, a love and passion to see these students succeed. And so I, I want to present to you three of our students who decided to take the time to share some of their experience with you. So I'd first like to introduce Tanisha.
Tanisha Rander. I attended the HBCU tour. I take away from being an African-American student to see a lot of my kind succeeding. Everywhere we went, it was like a student said, I see a lot of us. I say, yeah, we're like, we're on a different side of town from where we're from. But even from the airports to wherever, we see African-Americans actually succeeding. Every last one of our tour guides were African-American. Some of the students, they, they didn't have like a clue of where they want to go or was afraid to leave home or just leave the state. But after going to this tour, we felt comfortable, you felt confident, you seeing the resources that's there. Actually, they have a little bit more resources than, than we do, but we only know what we're limited to. We don't know that those resources are out there, but, but by us going, we learned all that. We actually was able to seem like a student, we sat in classrooms. We ate at two of the campuses. We had some wonderful tour guys. I don't want to be biased, but I love Haji. I also like Delaware State. They offered my program. I, it's between that one and Hampton. But Delaware State was a little bit more homey. And I, you know, I'm a little bit older, so I was like a homey environment. But it was very beneficial that my son is an athlete at ABC, and I found out that Norfolk was looking at him. They're trying to recruit him. So I'm like, he says, Mom, where are you going? I said to Norfolk, he said, is it green and yellow? I'm like, yeah, he said, you know, I've been talking to the recruits. I said, good, I can find out some information if I want to let you go or not, you know? If I want to find out if it's the right place for you. And that's who we had, a bowling alley. It just has so many experiences that we could have as students that we don't know about that's out there for us. And I really wish that, if you guys can pay for every last student to go, that would be wonderful. But I know that's impossible, but that's experience I took from. Thank you, guys.
Next, I'd like to invite Nancy to the microphone.
Everyone, my name is Nancy Hernandez. My major is early childhood education. And I just wanted to let you know that first when I started, I finished this is my second year. I didn't think about traveling, but I think, but now I've spent. Now it's an opportunity to explore. That was wonderful. Now I'm having my mother and I go because they have a wonderful opportunity. And they have resources, and it was a pleasure to stand with different students, different attitudes, different personalities. And we became friends. Now we say hi every time that we see each other at the campus. And then the faculty was amazing, given, given the guidance that we need. And another thing that I did, and because of this tour, is I shared my PowerPoint with two of my classes, one is in English and the other one is Spanish, because some of the students don't know about this tool. And some think that it's only for African-Americans, which is not true because I was there. And I'm so thankful for the opportunity to explore a few different universities. Thank you.
Lastly, I hope he shares his exciting news today. Anthony.
All right, Kim.
Yes.
My name is Anthony Marshall. My business is Anthony here at ABC. My trip, I mean, my experience on the trip was honestly amazing. It's mine right now. I loved it. Every second of it. That was my first time on a plane outside the state. It, it was amazing waking up at nine AM, just finding a new adventure every day. Favorite school that we got went to was Morgan State. I was kind of disappointed about how hard it was raining. The kids was on, actually, the focus was on spring break, so being able to get experience like I've been. But Morgan State, it felt like home. They had my program. I really didn't attend on going to HBCU, but it really opened my eyes a lot. Yeah, like I said, it felt like home, so. Yeah, the museums was great, honestly, being from Palm Hill. You guys are from Palm Hill, my customer. It is, it's just a, a place to get everybody here. It really was amazing. That's all I can say. Thank you.
You have good news?
You have good news?
Oh, oh, yeah, I have something to tell you. Recently about, about Morgan State. And she told me I could possibly be leaving San Antonio State before I thought, yeah, my car and stuff like that, but. I don't know. It's, it's a lot of opportunities. I didn't want to put that out there, but that is a, a move on toward.
That's awesome.
When we were on the tour, we got excellent news from Morgan State. They asked if anyone applied. One of our students said yes, the next day on the bus, she got accepted.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
If you guys ever need a local DJ or student DJ, I'm available.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I tell people all the time because it's important. I'm an HBCU graduate. I went to Winston-Salem State University. I understand about the Lincoln University motto. Our words, we had an art that you come into the school, and it says, enter to learn, depart to serve. I never forgot it, and I've tried to live my life by that. I'm so glad that young people on the West Coast are being exposed to HBCUs. It is a myth that they are only for African-Americans. An example I could use is that West Virginia State University is seventy percent Caucasian. I can also tell you that Prairie View A and M, two years ago, had a young Latina woman as Miss Prairie View A and M. So I, I want you guys to know that this is an opportunity that changed my life, and I want kids on the West Coast to be exposed to it as much as possible. Thank you so much. I'm very proud of this program.
I have one more thing to do. Please, support the next year tour. We want to share it with other students, and we want them to have this year.
All right, we need to talk fundraiser then. Let's do it.
Just a couple more things over here. As you all look at the gained experiences part, some things that came to mind as we gather here to navigate the evolving landscape of higher education. It's essential to recognize, along with what's been said by Dr. Quintas and our great students, the transformative experiences that shape their lives and futures too, as you have said, as well to our president. In light of this, I want to share just the profound impact HBCU has had on them, framing it within the title words of Dr. Hemingale, President of Spelman College. So she eloquently captures the essence of the HBCU experience when she said the following. And they are saying it matters to me to be at a school where I am going to be nurtured, where I'm going to be appreciated, where who I am is valued, where I look up and see people who look like me who have achieved a lot. And that means something to them because they know they're going to go out to a workforce where that's going to be the case. But they will learn here how to value who they are and be able to hold their own place in America. And not only in America, or a more global society anywhere in the world. So by them participating here, our students witness that supportive atmosphere that fosters a sense of belonging and community. They meet role models and mentors who reflect their potential for success and leadership. That is irreplaceable, irreplaceable. So with that said, thank you for your unwavering support of our students here and your commitment to the principles that guide our collective journey towards a more inclusive and equitable future. Just some pictures that are left over here of the great time that we had, if you can go to at least that one. And as noted by Dr. Quintas, we have over there reflective area too, within the Smithsonian, right, museum too. Because such powerful images are there, powerful images, right, that you do need at least a week to really absorb it all and contemplate it, right? In that contemplative court. That's also where there is a Dr. Branaleese, myself, and Ozzy are smiling, right? Behind there, the great Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, that when the Mexican president, right, under, leave that my name, Andrés Manuel López Obrador, was over here, right? Always write a boss's novel asses, his corny line over his scene, but he's a pacifism, right? How it's not bullets. Went over there and visited that site and said, what a great role model it is for the world, right? To seek his guidance, words and wisdom for a pacifistic world as well. That's it. If there's any questions, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We're to consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Sure.
Vote.
Approve.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo? Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're to thirteen action items, thirteen point one, approval of resolution twenty-three dash twenty-four slash eight, ordering governing board member election. So motion?
Go move.
Vote. Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Aye.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen two, approval of services agreement between Community College Search Services, LLC and Antelope Valley Community College for providing appropriately qualified candidates for vice president ending positions. May I have a motion? Second. Vote.
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Aye.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Three point three, approval of the Learning Aligned Employment Program, LAEP agreement with Little Tots Preparatory Academy. May I have a motion?
Sure.
Vote.
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Aye.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Thirteen point four, approval of memorandum of understanding between Shutterfly Life Touch LLC and Antelope Valley College to provide school portrait services to CDC families. A motion, please?
Sure.
Sorry.
Vote.
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Aye.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen point five, approval of Antelope Valley Union High School District and then Antelope Valley College and Career Access Pathways Partnership Agreement for dual enrollment through twenty twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight. May I have a motion? Second. Vote.
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Aye.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen six, approval of Bus Charter Services Agreement between Joseph Blades Senior DBA, Caribbean Pacific Bus for transporting student athletes from April ninth, twenty twenty-four through April eighth, twenty twenty-nine. May I have a motion?
Sure.
Vote.
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines? Trustee Gaines?
Aye.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen seven, approval of services agreement between Lingabe LLC and Antelope Valley College for interpreting services through twenty twenty nine. A motion, please?
Sure.
Second. Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Aye.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
It it may I ask why we're not calling for discussion?
Thank you so much. It is my era. Trustee Gaines?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cook, how do we handle this? It's okay. Mistakes happen. Okay. Mm-hmm. We'll move forward. Okay, well, let's do that. Let's find out. Is there any discussion from item thirteen point one through thirteen point six or seven that anyone has discussion for? If there is, we have the time to revisit it. No? Okay, so I guess we'll move forward, making sure that we utilize discussion. Yep. After discussion. Okay, so thirteen point eight is approval of destruction of documents, class two optional, class three disposable. May I have a vote?
Sure.
Discussion? The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Aye.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen nine, approval of approval to utilize the California Multiple Services, Multiple Award Schedule, C M A S, with Mohawk Commercial Inc. for the purchase of floor covering and related services. May I have a motion?
Sure.
Discussion? The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Thirteen nine, approval of services agreement between Latian Pictures Inc. and Antelope Valley College for production of twenty twenty-three twenty-four annual report video. May I have a motion?
Sure, move for thirteen point ten. Sorry.
Thirteen second. The vote? Uh excuse me, discussion?
Uh yes, uh Madam President, I wonder if it's possible for the board to see uh this video before we pay for it?
Um that's a good question, but we have to have authorization to engage the services of this company in order to produce it.
Thank you.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen eleven, approval of consultant services agreement between Dr. Vicky L. Tras Movaini, D B A Make the Connection, and Antelope Valley College with Strong Workforce Funds. May I have a vote?
Sure.
Discussion?
Uh yes, uh Madam President, can we combine thirteen point eleven, twelve, and thirteen?
Yes, sir, we may. Have we already had a motion yet? So we can combine the next two?
They all deal with strong workforce funds.
Yes, sir, but we've already made the vote on thirteen point eleven, so we can combine thirteen twelve and thirteen thirteen, okay?
Thank you.
Discussion? The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
We're gonna combine thirteen twelve, thirteen thirteen, as they both deal with strong workforce funds. May I have a motion?
Sure. Sorry.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Board, also, I would like to ask if we can combine thirteen fourteen, thirteen fifteen, thirteen sixteen, and thirteen seventeen, as they all deal with Measure A V. May I have a motion?
Sure.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo? Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
We are to reports and announcement, Academic Senate, Hal Huntsman.
Good evening, trustees, President Zalit, Ms. Cook, and Ms. McFur. Uh I have a few different things. First of all, let me make sure you're aware, I'm I'm pretty sure you're aware, but one of the biggest things that has happened recently for Antelope Valley College faculty is that we now have two bachelor's degree in respiratory care. This is a huge achievement for the college, uh and we hope it's uh first, second of many more, but the point is, it it's really a huge achievement, and at the end of my report, I want to highlight at least one of the faculty members who really spearheaded that work. In addition, I want to extend congratulations this week, wait, no, last week. It's hard sometimes to keep track. Last week, uh we had our academic senate officer elections, and I want to tell you the results of that election. Uh I can tell you that almost all of our uh officers was a contested, so there was more than one candidate. And uh the first person who uh our vice president is going to be Mesa Nicholas from the counseling department. Congratulations to her. Our first executive officer will be um Nari Casaforth from the Communication Studies Department. And our second executive officer will be Dr. Jason Bowen from Physics. Congratulations to them all. I'm really looking forward to working with the brand new uh set of leadership in uh the academic senate. Uh the other really big thing, before I turn to my last item, that we're really looking at is uh because of legislation and uh guidance that's come out from the state chancellor's office, we have had to revise our A B C local general education degree requirements. Uh this is obviously one of the more important things that we as faculty do to consider. What do we really believe students need to leave our college with in terms of the skills and knowledge that they, that every student should have? And uh we've already begun that discussion uh with the recommendation from our A B C committee, and uh we are going to continue it, and we need to uh actually have a final approved version of our general education requirements before the end of this semester. So I expect to see uh some actually, some changes in board policy that reflect that as well. Finally, I want to start a new tradition in my, in the, my board report, which is to try to highlight uh at least one faculty member who is doing really exemplary work. And as I mentioned earlier, I want to highlight Dr. Wendy Stout in our re- uh respiratory care program. Her work in in really bringing forward this bachelor's degree has been, I I it it's hard to describe the number of hours that she's really put into it and that she continues to do because the next step now that we have the bachelor's degree is to uh get accreditation for the program. And she just continues to impress, and we are so lucky to have her. Uh and so I I just want to send my congratulations to her, and it wasn't just her, it was a key method, but I really want to highlight her speciality. Thank you, board. Good evening.
Thank you so much. Um the Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, Dr. Jason Bowen.
I'm on my phone because I like to talk. Uh some news, uh the faculty union had a social event on Friday that's putting my faculty. Faculty knew how to enjoy themselves, and what I, the turnout was actually surprising and shocking for me given the rain. So what I learned is that faculty, many faculty are looking for opportunities to get out and enjoy each other's company and be human. Environment is what we can be human. Next, my my understanding, what I was informed of earlier, is that this Friday, the district will provide the necessary data uh to comply with the make bold provision and per decision. And I'm looking forward to working with the the district uh to resolve that matter and put it behind us. And then uh next Friday, we're supposed to have a meeting uh where we go from there, but my hope being is that we resolve that particular matter. Uh we're also working on a sidebar bit of agreement is what we're we're negotiating with uh Dr. Lauren Helsberg and uh Dr. Kathy Bakke had put in, had given some, some input into, you know, why that would be necessary. And the goal for this is to actually identify when there are enough students to open up another section. So any efforts to bring developments and and open up opportunities for students, we support. So that's actually good news, and it's it seems to be going fairly well. Um I did want to say, you know, so I I I hear about the HBCU tour. This is a fairly regular event, and and I have not participated in it, and uh that is my fault. I actually, uh my first year in college was at Morehouse College, and I learned the greatest lesson from the greatest teacher, and that is failure. So that was my first year of college, but it was spectacular. Everything worked out the way. Uh W. B. Du Bois, who was one of my greatest heroes in history, uh he graduated from Fisk University and then became the first Black American to get a PhD from Harvard. Uh Fisk was established in eighteen sixty-six. Morehouse was eighteen sixty-seven, a year after. The motto at Fisk actually is the most frightening and most wonderful motto I've ever heard, which is her sons and daughters are ever at the altar. So I just want to leave with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. Associated Student Organizations, Steve Benitez.
How do you do? Oh. Turns out way low. Okay. Uh good evening, board trustees. Probably have a lot to catch up on, but I just wanted to uh say that ASO has came back from General Assembly. And about fifty-seven resolutions, not five, but fifty-seven went up to SS triple C. And I tell you, the Saturday and Sunday, going over these different resolutions, debating here and there, it was successful. We actually managed to go through uh thirty-seven that were uh thirty-three approved and booked, and then the rest uh went up with the base. So it was about twenty-two, around that number. Um so I was actually really excited to attend the workshops. Many of us got the opportunity to learn um a few skill sets that we may take into the next year. And um to follow up with that, Marauders Matter was a leadership institute that we pulled off March first, and we had about thirty-plus students sign up for conflict resolution, time management, participation. And uh we even uh represented Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. We had a team um just PowerPoint and uh discussed a few of the resources that interest in that of that conference and effective communication skills. So in doing so, um finding into that, it was really successful on that Friday. And um on April fifteen to April sixteen, our ASO elections have already started. So we have actually got about sixteen students, so it's pretty packed election. I'm at, um sorry. Um I'm just really excited to see amount of number of candidates that um signed up for ASO. Being uh this year has been an interesting um uh take with uh transitions and leadership. And I can say um I'm actually uh very excited to see these new ASO members and take on the mantle and um be able to, you know, represent A B C and students alike. On ASO election, I could say uh the faculty awards, and this thing I'm not running because it's only faculties. Uh we have five, um Juana Catley, Osvaldo LaRus Perez, Kevin North, Mark McGovern, and Thomas Woodock. Uh those are the five faculties that we picked for the Most Inspiring Faculty Award, which will be announced on April nineteen at the luncheon, one, three P M. The luncheon's going to be held at the Helen M. Center. And um that being said, um we just hope that um that luncheon goes off on the pitch. We put a lot of effort on designing the food theme and um the awards. So far, clubs have signed up for um um recognition awards, and we've been on top of just trying to be transparent with the clubs. We have so many now that um our VP of Club Affairs has a very ample time to ask some of us, see if we can sit in the clubs, see how they're doing. It's sometimes I do take my Fridays and sit in with STEM and my Fridays with MENA. We have a hot look this uh this Friday on the twelfth of April, uh in honor of uh our era uh heritage month. So we're gonna actually have some dishes at the student lounge, and that's from one thirty to two thirty. So um that being said, the ASO constitution um has been um uh looked over, some things updated, and um we just hope to get to see it and see if you approve it, get your blessing on it. Um I just wanted to make it a sensitive of looking at the stifling opportunity for this, so. But um the thing is, uh leadership at its best, um ASO, like we don't do it for the something for the money. We just do it because we want students to be heard. Um earlier today, I got to listen to one of the students, um Jayvon, who um is graduating. His mom is in the hospital, is sick, but like my mom who struggled with stage two cancer if you wanted her kid to attend your school, graduate, you know, prepare for the future, look forward. Uh so that being said, um that's me.
Thank you so much, Mr. Benitez. Um to the general public, I'm just gonna call it Eclipse Brain. Um Ms. Ford is not here. Next, we have Ashley Hawkins with the Administrative and Confidential Report. Ms. Hawkins, let me just congratulate you again on those learning center numbers. You are helping students across this valley.
Thank you so much. Um I will be brief. I, we also, it seems like Friday was a, was an interesting evening across the valley. Um we were at the Vets for Veterans Dinner. We had the pleasure of taking eight students, um and they got to get dressed up and participate in the dinner. Um board member, Mr. Reeves, and P P Bra were there, which it's always so fun to watch students get to engage with administrators and board members and um Vets for Vets had a record-breaking night. They made more money that night for the community than they've made, and and I don't know how familiar you are, but Vets for Vets is a local grassroots veterans organization, and they take care of our local vets. Uh they don't really have any limits, whether it's housing or food or gas, or I think they joked that the event that it was cat food even that they helped with. And so they really meet the veterans where they are, and and we have a ton of their um vets that they've helped uh come to school. So that's kind of where the partnership happens. So thank you so much for always supporting that event, for allowing me to be a part of it, and for supporting that way as well. And um I kind of feel as how um I wanted to recognize the C M S A folks who contributed to bringing the bachelors in respiratory care. So special shout out to Dean Greg Borman and to Rosio Heasley. Um Rosio is the uh freight train behind our bachelor's programs, and uh she works tirelessly at the, with the process and functioning of those programs. So um so we just, thank you so much for everything, and have a good day.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hawkins. Diane is not here. Um President Zalit?
As you can tell, uh trustees, it's it's quite an event for us as a single college district to be offering our second baccalaureate. I can't underscore enough the importance of this to our community.
And I want to thank the faculty and the administrators who worked really, really hard to meet a lot of deadlines, very aggressive deadlines, and they, they really burned a lot of midnight oil to make this happen. And they did it out of love for this community and out of love for our students. You cannot go anywhere besides a California Community College and get a bachelor's degree for around eleven thousand dollars into a medical field that will earn you much better than merely living wages. And so when we think about our mission to building our community, building stronger communities, creating upward mobility, this is, the, nothing gets closer to the heart of it. So I am deeply grateful to all who were involved in this and my gratitude uh, goes out to you. So, um, I just echo what was said. I'm glad it's, it's been said a few times. I want to thank, uh, Dr. Mark McGovern, uh, for hosting an event today on campus. We had a viewing party outside New Hazy Hall for the, uh, eclipse. And it was inside, you know, outside they were handing out glasses and you could look without going blind and you could see the sun coming or the moon come in between the sun and us. Um, and inside the planetarium, they were actually live streaming, uh, so that you could see the places in, on our continent where it was actually going full, uh, eclipse. So it was a great way for us to have those social community building kind of activities all wrapped up in, in educational experience. So today, the planets aligned. People all over the country gathered to watch as the moon blotted out the sun, creating a lunar eclipse. And we all stood looking skyward at the astronomical wonder. What is it about this event that draws us together and causes us to pause? We know the sun is a powerful star whose energy is vital for our survival. And we know that if we dared to, to look directly at her, we will damage our sight irreparably. That's power. I believe we were enamored by today's eclipse because the moon, which is about four hundred times smaller than the sun, altered the sun's effect. The impossible for a moment became possible. Today's eclipse is a reminder for Antelope Valley College that we, like the moon, have agency and force of our own that can change the effect of greater systems on our students and on our community. We encounter students daily who are looking to belong, to learn, to grow and to access the freedom of living that many of us enjoy. No matter our position of service, we can be that force that changes a student's trajectory. We can be that force that even for a moment sheds a different light on a subject. We can make the impossible possible. As we come into the last four weeks of spring semester, I encourage us to focus anew on our mission. Antelope Valley College, a public institution of higher education, provides quality, comprehensive education to a diverse population of learners. We are committed to student success, offering value and opportunity in service to our community. In particular, our institutional values are pivotal in how we accomplish our mission. We have four values. Community, academic excellence, integrity and respect. Under integrity on our website, it says, "We create an environment of trust, candor, empathy and professionalism and expect ethical behavior from all." Respect, we cultivate, embrace, nurture and empower all individuals regardless of race, ethnicity, ability, gender, age, sexual orientation, class status or religious belief. Being transformative in a service-centric model becomes easy when we keep focused on how we, like the moon, exercise our agency and power to affect positive, positive change in our environment. Commencement, the ultimate celebration is Friday, May third. And I hope to see all of you there to celebrate the accomplishments of our students, classified professionals, faculty and administrators. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Zalit. Board member, comment?
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to acknowledge that it's, uh, National Era of Heritage Month and it's also Autism Awareness Month. So as we continue in the month of April, we keep those two groups of people in mind, on campus and off campus. And just how important that everyone is, in fact. And then I'd also like to talk about the trip that I, along with other members of ASO, took to ASAC, which is the, uh, American Student Association of Community Colleges. And we had an amazing conference in Washington, D.C. And it was a lot of ours, first time in Washington, D.C. and it was an amazing experience. We had the opportunity to learn from a lot of other community colleges across the nation as well as participate in actually pushing forward, uh, legislation. And one of our, one of my highlights was the fact that since we were so intense on pushing this legislation toward, forwards, we had got the opportunity to visit Mike Garcia's office and we got a tour of the entire Capitol Building. And it was just really amazing and I, along with everyone else, was just in shock. And I think it really came into perspective about our role in our nation's governments and how we actually have a voice. And I'd also just like to acknowledge that by the time that we meet next time, semester two will be over. So we are on the final stretch and I hope we're all gonna make it. See you guys on the other side. Thank you.
Trustee Gaines.
Thank you. Um, uh, I, I just want to say that, uh, last Friday, uh, I too should have been at the, uh, Vets for Veterans Dinner, but I was so sick last week, uh, Friday. I was, I was just, my, my trash can literally was full with, with tissues and I knew I would be the most annoying thing at the table. So I, 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 uh, backed out of attending. But one of the highlights of my Friday afternoon was I, I too do a Friday letter. And I opened up, uh, an email I received from CSBA, California School Boards Association. And in this, um, email, they, they had an article published on the six community colleges who had recently just received, um, the, a bachelor's degree. So amidst all my coughing, coughing and, and, uh, just, you know, I felt like a hot mess. Um, I was very, very elated just to read that article and, uh, I actually copied and pasted it into my Friday letter for, for my board, so they would know just what a great place Antelope Valley Community College truly is. I have to say that there is nothing that this community college does anymore that truly surprises me. I, I, I want to give a shout out to Dr. Wendy Stout and her, and her entire team. Uh, to have one bachelor's at a community college is a big darn deal. To have two now, it's like, wow. And, um, I, I doubt seriously this is gonna be our last. I have, I have a feeling that there will be a third and a fourth and who knows from there. But, uh, I just want to say, uh, congratulations to all the faculty and the staff at ABC. Dr. Zalit, um, I know everybody played an instrumental role in making this happen. And, uh, just, just makes me very proud to be a, a board member and a citizen of, of this community.
Trustee Buffalo? Uh, sorry, trustee Reeves?
Uh, no comment.
I must have known you were gonna say that. Trustee Buffalo?
Well, I'm behind this big block, so I can't see anybody. Um, I congratulate our Learning Center and our, our other programs that were presented tonight. I, I think we do a lot of really good things in the community and I think from, you go back thirty, forty years ago and we're on the cutting edge in a lot of things and we're ahead of a lot of community colleges. That's a, I think, a credit to our administration, uh, moving us forward and our faculty and, and helping out. Certainly, congratulations to Wendy, who does a great job in, uh, respiratory therapy. That's all.
Since, uh, Diane Knippel is not here tonight, I will remind everyone, the Foundation Wine Walk is April twenty seventh. And you're running out of time to buy the discounted tickets because they do go up in price on April twenty fourth. So if you're interested in the Wine Walk, contact the Foundation Office or your local board member who is selling tickets. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Adams. With, with that, our next meeting is May thirteenth in our regular space over at the college and thank you for the opportunity. Have a good evening.